Okay, I'll call this meeting of the Kerrville City Council a special workshop on Tuesday, September the 19th at 10 o'clock to order. This meeting has been called to discuss as one of our ongoing workshops, the recycling program and the landfill expansion update. And so we would call for whomever would be the expert on that to begin with the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, I'll introduce the item, Mayor and Council, and then we'll have David come on up and present unless you're gonna...
Okay. So, this is part of our ongoing series as once a month, we have our workshops. We've begun that now, I guess, two months ago. For future workshops, we've got, I think the next one is on water and wastewater. And then we also have one upcoming on parks, programming and recreation. And so if there's other topics that you all would like to just have more of a deep dive on in the future, realizing that we only get to do this about once a month, then just let me know and we'll try to schedule that in. So today, we're talking about our recycling program, giving you a status report. And as the Mayor mentioned, also at the end of that, we want to talk some more about the landfill permitting process and where we are with that process. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to David, who will make the presentation. And then along the way, should you have questions, you know, feel free to ask. This is supposed to be very informal. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, sir. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
So, yeah, today we'll be discussing recycling here in Kerrville and sort of touch on the landfill expansion, where it stands right now. So here's an overview of what we'll be going over. Why do we recycle here in Kerrville? As far as the structure of the program, some of the services that are provided that pertain to recycling. And then we'll go over the couple, some history, the curb site collections, and then an outreach, and then the future initiatives of what we plan on doing in the future for recycling. So why do we recycle here in Kerrville? So there's, the vision is we want to support the waste reduction goals of the solid waste master plan. I'd say it's a regional plan that's adopted by ACOG. The state no longer has a statewide plan because it's so diverse. You have West Texas, solid waste is different than East Texas and South Texas. So there are certain goals that the state has, but they're mainly adopted through a regional plan.
Is that goals, David, or laws?
Goals.
Okay.
Goals. There are certain laws that, it's hard to set laws on recycling because it differs from every municipality in what they can or cannot do. But we fall under the regional plan from Alamo Area Council of Governments. So that's the, one of the visions is to support that plan. Also create a positive impact on the environment. So you want to have household hazardous waste events, those types of activities that help with the environment. Back to that, the goals of the plan, you want to have a recycling program in place, which is what we have here. And also ultimately to protect resources. Just a couple, some stats you've probably heard, you know, saving, recycling one ton of cardboard conserves 46 gallons of oil. One ton of paper saves 17 trees. Also landfill is a resource. And I'll touch on that in another slide on the landfill. So some of the goals that we have is to develop a positive community mindset towards recycling. So we also partner up with Republic Services to help with KISD recycling. They provide that for the schools. We do our own in-house recycling as well with the curb site. We also want to set the tone for community to follow. So right now, we have recycling for curb side, but we also want to develop some type of recycling within our own organization and set the tone for everyone here. Also to expand the program so future capacity can be optimized and preserved. That pertains to the landfill. Our contract is up in 2030, so we want to make sure that if we decide to go with whatever operations we want to do, we already have a lot of recycling in place here. The community is already on board with recycling. It's not going to be new to the, to the community. And controlling long-term cost. When you have a high diversion rate of what you're diverting away from the landfill, gives you some leverage. If a company comes in and asks, you know, what, what's your diversion rate? If you have a high rate, you're gonna have a diversion rate, you're probably gonna get a lower disposal rate or operational cost for the ratepayers.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You said something about setting up a plan like for us. I assume you mean like city admin and departments and stuff like that. Do we, do we not have something right now? Or what are we doing?
We, we do have that, but it, it needs some improvement.
Okay.
So do we recycle cans and paper and plastic?
Yes, ma'am.
Just about every city facility, mostly City Hall and a couple of other sites, but we want to expand that and add it more robust.
Well, I know one thing I had asked you about in the beautification committee was putting recycling vessels, disposal vessels at our parks, you know, which we didn't currently have. I think we've done that, have we not?
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's part of the next plan, is to expand on that program. But yes, we are working on that. So the structure of how recycling is here in the city, it falls under solid waste division. So anything that pertains to recycling is gonna fall under solid waste division, which is under the Public Works Department. So we have Republic Services, who's our residential contractor. Myself, I'm the staff liaison for solid waste. So I interact with the public and Republic on a day-to-day basis, quite a bit through emails or whatnot. We also have Public Works Maintenance Worker, which is some of our city support staff, who helps out with some tasks associated with carts or informing the public. If they see something wrong, they'll step in and kind of help out. We also have our Water Records Staff, which provides billing support. Many, many questions related to billing, it is done through our Water Records Staff. And so residential collections, they're provided by Republic Services. It is a component of, of the complete package, which consists of your regular garbage, which is done every week, your bulk waste, which we have two opportunities at curb site or voucher. And then recycling fits in, there's another component, as well as yard waste. Yard waste is also a form of recycling. It also gets diverted from, from the landfill. And we provide this, these types of services to approximately 7,900 single-unit homes. Right now, we, we aren't involved in the commercial side or apartment complexes, but that's something that can be developed later on down the road. And the rates are charged as a solid waste services, and it's part of the billing system.
Let's go back to the commercial customers. They were contract individually with Republic.
Yes, ma'am.
However they use.
Yeah.
And so their waste comes to our landfill, though.
That's correct.
And they're charged a fee for that through Republic? Is that how that works?
Yes, ma'am. Republic does provide some small recycling to commercial businesses. I think McDonald's, this place that used to be Hastings', they've had some recycling dumpsters there. So it is provided, but not too many folks are providing that service, or not too many businesses are providing that to commercial. But we can expand on that later on and work with Republic or other companies that come in and provide that service to people that are interested, or businesses that are interested as well.
Well, in a moment, he'll talk about the drop-off center at the landfill, which gets quite a bit of traffic from that kind of a customer.
So as I mentioned earlier, curb site collections every other week for our ratepayers in either the recycling carts, which are 45 or 95 gallons in size. Also the monthly yard waste collections, part of recycling. That's done once a month.
David, let me ask you something. I don't know if this is the place or not, but since it's a workshop, I noticed a lot of bins that, waste bins, as I pass by are overfilled and the tops are open and stuff is, is out. And then I noticed some damage. Do you, tell me number one, if that is a problem when the vessel comes by to pick that up, if they're overfilled? That's number one. And number two, what do we do to notify? Because I remember when we were looking at this, they talked about sending or somehow notices to the property owner if something was placed in the wrong position or in the wrong manner. So tell me those two things.
That's correct. If the carts are overfilled, or they call it like a snow cone type deal with the cart, chances are Republic's not gonna service that. Couple of reasons why, if they do attempt to service it, as they're lifting that cart up, those bags are likely to fall. Now you have a mess. So we do ask that they, that the public keeps those lids closed. For the most part, if it's up a little bit, that's fine. But, yeah, so if they, if that bag drops on the floor, it's gonna create a mess. And Republic's not, they may pick it up, but they don't want to do that. They want to keep going on their route. So I told them, I said, "Don't, don't collect it. Notify the, the customer and we'll go that, that route."
So how do we notify them? On the spot, later? He makes a note of the US?
They'll, they'll lay a tag, or they'll jot down some notes, and they'll send an email on these addresses that weren't serviced for that reason. So customer calls, that's the first thing I do is check. They have a no trash out list, and that list has no trash out and any issues at a residence.
So...
And they'll state on there whatever address, not serviced due to bags on top. As far as the carts being damaged, we're still working through that. Their drivers were still new to the system. They're, they have a high turnover with their drivers, unfortunately, but they're learning how to operate that mechanism. And if you don't do it the right way, you're gonna damage a cart or set it down too hard. But they're, they're working on that, getting some sturdier containers. But I think we've mentioned that before, where they're gonna work it out in different phases. It's a huge capital cost to them to replace, you know, all these carts at once. So little by little, they'll start replacing them with a lot sturdier carts.
So I'd be curious to know at some point in time, you probably don't have it today, but I'd really be interested to know how many homes are receiving those notices? What big of, what size of problem that is? And then how we can fix that? You know, how we notify them? I got my little card, you know, for what you can and can't recycle, and I like the way that's done with the X's or the lines to educate people. But I'm sure that's problematic and people, it doesn't sit well if they go out and their garbage hasn't been collected. So how we handle that is important in terms of customer service and education, customer education. There's got to be a way that we, because I still also, not only do I see a lot of overfill, but I see them placed in places where I know the trucks can't get them. They're under trees, or they're too close to the mailbox, or whatever the issue. So we, if you have some statistics at some point in time and what percentage of people that is, then we'll decide what kind of customer service campaign we need to get on.
Okay. Yeah, I think through the outreach and press releases or whatnot, honestly, I don't see that, I don't receive any calls that much on, on overfilled carts. But when I do receive a call, the, the first thing I tell them is it, those bags that are extra are actually in your cart, what could have been recycled? You know, you have a stuffed trash cart, but your recycling cart is empty. There, there's a problem there. So I do try and educate staff that takes phone calls, does the same thing as well. We try and educate them as we take that phone call, so.
The, the other thing I object about is the blue ones. Most people are, or I shouldn't say most people, because I don't know about most people, but a lot of people leave them out. They, they move them back from the curb to someplace. But the blue is very visible. And you go down the street and it looks like we got garbage cans in by every house, or in some, in most cases, two. You know, one for waste and one for recycle. If we did them green, or even did them camo colored, they, you could put them in and they'd look like they fit. Is this, this is just like putting on a big red button on your shirt.
I think that was discussed when they originally covered this, and none of us were on council at the time, but it is like David said, a huge capital cost.
Well, I agree that it is, but if they're, if they're, if they're buying some new ones to replace, let's get, let's get something besides blue, is my suggestion.
The, the problem with that is their, Republic's main competitor is green, which is waste management.
Well, I don't, that's unfortunate.
And so that's their color is, is blue, but yeah, we can run that by them, see if there's any options for different colors.
You know, we're paying for it. We're not paying their competitor, we're paying them. But let's, let's pay them to put, you know, if, if their own color is green, then let's do camo color.
I've actually been in a city where we had vanity carts, where you could have a fake eighteen.
Yeah.
You came from Dallas.
It was actually somewhere else. But I suspect it's also an issue with, they'll say, "Well, we're keeping your rates down because we do this in bulk, and we do all of them for every city in blue. If we go a different color, that's gonna cost you X more on your rate," that sort of thing. But we'll, we can definitely explore that.
Yeah.
Or maybe we get a bid from their competitor next time, so we get green ones next go red.
David, the same thing, and then I'll leave, leave this page, but the yard waste also collections, I don't know how we're running on that, seems to be pretty smooth. People seem to be pretty knowledgeable of how to lay it out and where to lay it out. But like, for instance, across street from me, there's been some yard waste there for quite a while, and I think it's probably because it isn't stacked correctly, that sort of thing. So that's another thing that educationally, as we do these newsletters, Mr. McDaniel, you know, you made reference to that in your news article today, maybe that's one thing you could address in a little more detail. And Stuart, you know, in your releases every once in a while. I don't think it's a huge problem at this point, but I did, I have noticed that sometimes things aren't picked up.
Well, this goes hand in hand with code enforcement as well.
Exactly.
Okay.
Especially on the brush, not so much on leaving your cart out too long.
Yeah.
That's also an issue that we can address.
Okay.
But a lot of it is letting people know, if they knew, they probably would do it differently, or just reminding them.
Exactly, yeah.
So we'll get you a list of all the complaints that we've received fiscal year-to-date, and then the nature of the complaint.
Okay. That's fine.
And we ask Republic that if you're not gonna pick something up, just let them know why. It'll eliminate some phone calls.
Yeah.
But as Mr. McDaniel mentioned, we do work with code compliance. I'll get phone calls from code compliance, and we'll go out and look at a pile, and I'll try and figure out why it wasn't serviced. And I'll go back to my list and see if it's on that list that Republic sends out, to see if there was an issue, why it wasn't picked up. But most importantly, they have to notify the, the customer. So that way, they're aware of it.
I would say to their credit, these ones with the lids up, they're picking them up. They saw my street all the time. They don't, they don't leave them.
Yeah.
They go ahead and pick them up.
That's true.
And it's not leaving a mess. I mean, they're, they're doing a good job with that.
Yeah, they, I agree with you. They do a good job of that picking them up.
Okay, so moving on to the next slide, which is collection events. It's also something that we provide. This pertains to our annual collection events for HHW, or otherwise known as Household Hazardous Waste. Some electronics, tires. We have that event right now currently, once a year. Some stats from the last event, just to give you an idea of how popular these events are. We had over 600 vehicles, 21 tons of HHW alone. That's over 40,000 pounds. 47 pallets of e-waste, and approximately 700 tires. The e-waste surprised me this year, because in the past, we had about 20, I think it was 21 pallets. We, more than doubled. Hopefully, I think we put a pretty good dent in what's out there, and we'll see how the next event, what type of, you know, waste is generated.
David, can you comment on what the funding source of this was?
Yes, that's what I was saying.
Who was it, who could bring it in? Was it just Kerrville residents?
Okay, so these events are typically funded by the city, but they're open to county residents. So we have that in our budget, you know, for, for an event. Now, we also pursue grant funding.
Right.
From ACOG, which they give you $25,000.
Right.
The rest, we'll cover it. But we always budget for us to cover the complete expense.
Yeah. And, and the county gives us the facility.
Recently, we partnered up with the county. Before, we, we didn't have a partnership that pertained to HHW. Last year, we couldn't apply for a grant, so we assisted then. We contacted Commissioner Reeves and his staff.
Yeah.
We assisted them with the application. They were able to get $25,000 grant, and we helped out also. But their facility is, is a nice facility, probably one of the best layouts we've had in a while. It's covered, it's in the Ag Barn, everything worked perfect. So we do have plans in the future. I want to develop long-term relationships with the county for these types of events, because they benefit both city and county residents. So I think it's important that we try and get a, a plan moving forward. Perhaps not only for a, a one-time event, maybe even a permanent site, you know, there's different opportunities you can go with this program.
David, could you also speak to some of the auxiliary benefits as far as, you know, the keeping some of the materials out of water courses and water supply and things like that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, these events are, they, they impact different components of solid waste, or actually the, the environment. Number one, you're, you're gonna recycle. Some of these items can be recycled. You're also eliminating illegal dumping, which can end up in our water source. You know, the river here is a valuable resource that we have here in the community. So these items, they may not be directly dumped into the river, but some side streets and we get runoff, and that runs off into the, into the river. But ultimately, we're, we're also providing a safe disposal opportunity to make sure that they do get disposed of the right way. And so that kind of cover on, on that side.
The two private facilities I know that are in the area, in the county, do they take hazardous waste? They take e-waste, I think, but do they take tires and that sort of thing?
Which private?
Well, there's two. There's one towards Ingram, and then there's one out towards Center Point. And the reason I'm asking, it was interesting, we should mention maybe a permanent facility at some point in time. I don't know if that would change our, our agreement with Republic or what, but I just wondered if those other two facilities that are private facilities take this kind of thing.
As far as the facilities here, we, we don't have a, a site that takes HHW or, they take e-waste, Scrap Solutions and Kerrville Recycling, they take e-waste.
Okay.
Tires, they don't take tires.
Okay.
But to have a permanent site, there, there's a lot to it.
Yeah.
Number one, who are you gonna serve? City, county? That's where you have to develop that partnership with them, find out. Permanent sites typically start off small, having maybe an event once a quarter, and then see the popularity, see how much you're, you're generating, and then you can go to maybe monthly. And then later on, you could even go every week, have it open certain days. That's how San Antonio started. They're bigger population, but they, they have their program structured like that. And we've talked about that before, different, different ways of, of doing it, but you'd have to come up with a very good structure, because it involves county and city. So we also have our, our recycling drop-off site. So this is sort of some pictures on, on the dumpsters we have out there, and a picture of the site entrance. There's some numbers on, on this site. The average monthly visitor is about 1,400 vehicles. Average tons dropped off, about 30 tons. This is available for small businesses, it can come out and drop off some stuff. It's the same recyclables that we allow at curb side, with the exception of glass. But the residents that have extra recyclables, they, they won't fit in that cart. If they're moving in or moving out, a lot of cardboard's generated, they can take it out there. So we do have this site available during regular hours of the transfer station.
On this one, it might be worth noting that they don't check for residency on this one. So anywhere in surrounding counties, it doesn't matter, it just comes through. And this is actually paid for through our rate, to our, our ratepayers. Again, the idea is that, you know, if you're lowering your disposal costs overall, then, you know, then it's gonna impact positively on our own ratepayers.
And back to Republic Services and the, and the household hazardous waste, we, we don't have, there's, there's an, any relationship or we don't work with each other on these, on the HHW stuff. They don't get into household hazardous waste. So we're on that on our, but that, that's fine. We've been like that for years, and it's, we've, we've got a good start right now. So here's some numbers, a little touch on, on the history of curb side recycling here in the community. We have from years 2010 to 2015, we had our, our monthly waste diversion rate, which averaged 10 to 16 percent. Keep in mind, that's all your recyclables and your yard waste that's getting diverted from the landfill. So you have your yard waste, recyclables, and your trash. Those are the three that, that determine your diversion rate. We also have our monthly tons collected, which in the past was 52 tons. And currently, we sit at about 105 tons collected. And our diversion rate right now is at 28 percent. It's a yearly running average. You see how we collected before in these small 18-gallon bins, which are outdated in most municipalities these days?
This is, that's outstanding. When you compare it to other cities, it's almost unheard of to have that level of diversion rate. A lot of it, I think, has to do with the yard waste, because some cities just don't have the capacity to do yard waste that frequently.
Yeah, some cities offer it every, once a quarter, but we offer it every, every month. And that does help out with, with the diversion rate. Here's sort of a footprint of where we're at now with the, sort of breaks it down. So recycling, we're about 105 tons a month. Our yard waste, 81 tons a month. And our garbage is 470 tons per month. As I mentioned earlier, the diversion rate that we're averaging now is 28 percent. The state, I was speaking with Dr. Zanares with ACOG, and the state's goal was about 30 to 40 percent. I know Austin was real big on, on trying to hit 30 percent several years back. So for us to jump from 16 percent to 28 percent, that, that's a big increase. That, that shows that people here are wanting to recycle.
Has it affected our rates? You said that it would. I know that we just went up on our rates or proposed to, and I know that is by ongoing contract with Republic. And I know they do an annual review, but are you saying that it wouldn't have gone up as much? Or it would have gone up more, rather, if we didn't have these?
Yeah, ours is indexed to, I believe, a CPI. So it's really more, has more to do with when we go back out for bid, that we'll be competitive because of our diversion rate.
Yeah. Yeah, right now, it's, the rates, the increases are on that CPI. But later on, when we, if we ever go in the contract again, having a high diversion rate's gonna help out.
Okay.
So how do we increase that diversion rate? We want to keep increasing on that. We don't want to stop at 30 percent, 40 percent. So we need to look at ways to increase that rate. So we do have a, a small portion of that, which is our outreach, which consists of calendars that we send out yearly, magnets, brochures, which we sent these out this past year to help educate people on recycling and what, what, how to handle certain items. We also have our website and our press releases, which I will be working with Stuart to try and create some press releases we can send out maybe once a month on different topics of recycling. I think that'll be a, a good idea to help promote recycling. There's also monitored by the collection crew. As you mentioned earlier, they, as the crew's going out, if they see something that's not right, they'll, they'll notify, be it the customer or notify city staff, and that we can kind of handle it that way. These trucks are equipped with a camera, so as the, as they're getting emptied out, they will kind of monitor and maybe jot down some notes, and then go, go that route as far as trying to contact the customer. The visual observations, as I mentioned earlier, and the notifications. We also have our Public Works Maintenance Worker that is out collecting dead animals or is out and performing different tasks. As he's out, I also ask that he monitor some of these carts as well. Anything that he sees unordinary that's not right, let's try and contact that customer. So we have a Phase One, which is an ongoing pilot program on what we're doing next to expand on, on the, on the recycling program. We want to provide recycling opportunities at, at city-owned public facilities. Right now, Phase One consists of the sports complex. So we're gonna outfit that complex with some recycling receptacles throughout the complex, which will be a good thing. River, River Trail and the trailheads, that's also part of this pilot program. We're gonna, I was hoping that, that we would get the receptacles in before this presentation, but they're gonna go right next to that black trash receptacle. I went out and did some informal audits of some of these trailheads. Most of the stuff that's in these is plastic bottles.
Right.
It can be recycled, so.
Sure.
I'm working with parks with, it's actually, well, we've developed a program to, to implement these operations. And also the downtown parking area, we're gonna have a receptacle set up here in the third floor. So Phase Two is gonna be to include more locations. We want to have city facilities, also different parks. So, Phase Two is gonna be to include more locations. We wanna have city facilities, also different parks. I conducted a survey, well, Ashley's staff conducted a survey out at Shriner Park. And had six questions, but the one that stood out the most is the arrow. It's question five, would you recycle at this park if it's available? We had ninety-three percent said yes, they would, and then seven percent said that they wouldn't. But the seven percent that said they wouldn't.
So, that arrow was supposed to be at number five?
Yes, ma'am. So, the seven percent, they didn't have recycling in their community, which was question number one. So, that explains why they're not recycling at parks, in my opinion. But to have ninety-three percent of the visitors out there that are interested in recycling said that they would. That gives us an idea of how to go about expanding to parks, so that, that's something that we're gonna work on as well.
Realistically, everybody would recycle. If you've got a bin sitting next to it, you're gonna throw it in the recycling bin, right?
If you can read.
Yeah.
Also, at our, I would think that our street crews, you know, use that, maybe a small thing. I know they do water all the time. They may do it out of a can, but a, a, any of our facilities that use plastic.
That's correct. So, future initiatives that we have, wanna pursue some grant funding from ACOG. They do provide several opportunities. And you'll see that as a, on the consent agenda for next week as an item. That's to authorize us an application to ACOG for recycling. So, that'll come up on the next council meeting. We wanna improve communications on resources available from the private sector. Mayor, you mentioned there was a couple of sites here, Scrap Solutions, Curville Recycling, they offer metal recycling. There's Walmart, which provides oil drop-off. There's several resources, Home Depot, Lowe's, Goodwill. We wanna make sure that, that the residents here are aware of these resources. It's not just something that we're providing, but there's other, on the private side that provide services as well. As we mentioned earlier, implement recycling at additional city-owned public facilities, fire stations, over at the police station, parks, anywhere we possibly can that we have a facility, we wanna implement recycling there. And then develop partnerships with other agencies, whether it's the county, UGRA, or anyone here in locally that we can partner up with. And, and expand on this. We did talk earlier about the long-term HHW collection needs. We get phone calls throughout the year on, you know, I have to wait for that one event, whatever, I gotta, have to get rid of it now. So, I think that's something that we'll, we'll try and develop a, a program and see if we can increase the opportunities. And that pretty much covers the recycling portion of it. Do you have any questions before we jump into the landfill expansion? Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stuart Baron, talking about the expansion update.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Here to give you a very brief presentation on landfill expansion, tell you where we're at. Also, visit with the cell development. As you may know, that L and V is our contractor to do this work. This is, they're in the phase three of a three-phase expansion for our landfill.
Permit, landfill permit.
Permit. For landfill, permit to expand the landfill. So, we're gonna talk about their projected schedule and then also cell development. Already behind on the slides, I haven't even started. This is a map that y'all have seen before on the right-hand side with the blue and the, and the yellow, black. That has been developed into a cell strategy that we have on the left-hand side. The very last page in your packet has the cell development a little bigger where you can actually read it, hopefully. And we'll walk through that a little bit. This will be the order, or it will be the order that TCEQ will expect us to grow our landfill. You can see in the middle of those cells, it has the, the date or the, the time from when the cell will be starting. In the very center is cell one through five, that's the existing landfill. And it moves to the left there, to the left side of the page, with cell six, seven, eight, nine. Nine and ten are, are above and below one another, then eleven. Then it comes and wraps back around the bottom of the landfill, going back towards the transfer station, ending in cell fourteen, which is closest to the transfer station in the top center of the page. We jump then from cell fourteen down to the bottom of the page and go from, from left to right with cell fifteen through twenty. That sequencing is, is in, was devised because there is infrastructure in place right now to finish out cells one through five. We have roads going up there. It's kind of already up and running. And so, we, we just continue to add on to that and build those roads as we go across the cells and then come back around to the transfer station. That's the main justification for the, the sequencing of the cells. There's, there's not a whole lot of, you know, it's our preference. So, we just decided to stay on that side of the hill where there would be less travel space from the, the scale house and then also our travel distance from the scale house. And then build from cell to cell to cell. You really don't wanna jump around along the way as the, as the landfill goes.
Stuart, just for reference, on cells one through five, what sort of life span would that have in terms of capacity?
We looked at, well, to get an idea, well, right now, we have a, a contract with Republic Waste to bring us to 2030 to run the transfer station. Somewhere around twenty-fifth, or twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-two, we probably need to be looking at that and deciding, are we gonna wanna open our landfill? Are we gonna wanna continue that contract with them? Because there's a little bit of a lag in there. So, to get to your question, we looked at, how long would it take us to get to, let's say, cell twelve? And we believe that's about a twelve-year, twelve to seventeen, seventeen years. Seventeen years to finish cells one through five, all the way around to back to, to cell twelve.
But that's only once you start using it, so.
Once you start using.
Started using it at twenty-thirty. You're talking about seventeen years from then.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
So, right now, it has seventeen years more of life as we're using it.
That's, that's just to cell twelve. It's beyond that, because it goes through cell twenty. You're talking about.
Yeah, we have about, this will be about a hundred-year expansion. This will give us about enough airspace for a hundred years' worth of solid waste on site.
Oh, you said TCEQ.
We can't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
We're, we wouldn't, typically, we'd let the contract with Republic run till its expiration in, in twenty-thirty. So, at that point, then you would start, if, if council decides to move forward with the, with operating our own landfill or having a contractor do it, at twenty, at twenty-thirty-one, you'd start filling your landfill. And then it would take seventeen years for us to fill to cell twelve. We just picked a cell to figure out about how long it'd take to fill that area.
Or, or it still might be a decision that's made in twenty-thirty or wherever it gets made, that you continue to contract with somebody, not even to touch the landfill.
Correct. Yes, sir.
This, this permit expiration was simply an insurance policy to make sure that the city had options when it, when it decides to make that decision.
And you said TCEQ, I wanted to clarify, TCEQ has approved this cell movement this way? Did I misunderstand you there? Because I know we're in the permitting, right? We're just now in the design. We haven't submitted anything, right? So, they're not recommending anything at this point.
Well, TCEQ won't recommend. This is our recommendation that we're proposing to take to them this December.
Ours, okay.
Yes, ma'am. If y'all have any questions about that sequencing, not, we'll move on to schedule. So, we, L and V is on track for where we thought they would be. They've, we've got the floodplain, we're gonna talk, we've, we've worked through that with, we're gonna use the same one as Freezing Nichols, so they'll dovetail very well together. There hopefully won't be any discrepancies there. Survey, we did find one snag in the survey. There is an existing easement that goes through there for, it's an LCR easement, but it actually is supposed to belong to K-Pub, so we're helping K-Pub work through that. And they, they've said at first blush, they will be willing to abandon it, adjust services, our, our facilities out there. And if we need to, we can relocate that line and abandon that easement, so.
Where's that located on the map?
I have to come show you. It's gonna be hard to, to.
Is that going through cell thirteen and fourteen?
Looks like it.
It starts down here by kind of where the flyer field is, a little bit towards the entrance of the flyer field, comes through cell thirteen, over that lake there in the center, the little green area is a lake. And then where the label of cell thirteen is, goes through there to the existing landfill. Don't let me come point to you, you'll follow on that, all right?
Above cell thirteen, fourteen, that area.
So, it runs through twelve, thirteen, fourteen, ends at the, the old weight house, and then it ties back in and goes down to the new transfer station.
I guess that's what, O H E is overhead electric, I guess? That's the line you're talking about?
Yes. Reports and studies, so the, um, let's get back forward. So, the, they're on track to have the city a report to review on around December. Mid-December, we'll have the application to the city for us to review and get our final approval before it goes to TCEQ. In January, we'll start submitting things to regulatory agencies. We'll do the, we'll send things to TCEQ and also to FEMA to make sure it's in place. And then we anticipate the, that taking a whole year to get those agencies to approve or, or work through their questions and, and get their buy-in. And then somewhere in, in two thousand and nineteen, hopefully in January, February of two thousand and nineteen, we, we anticipate getting our landfill expansion permit. So, we're, we're pretty well on track.
At what part are we in that Part Three? We've done geotechnical, we've done geology, we've done groundwater. We haven't done facility design and site layout, right?
That's what we're, that's the plan that you were just, the cell plan. That's what we're working through.
So, what made them change their mind? Originally, they had decided that the Big Hill, the southern expansion would be the most appropriate for the city of Curville.
At one time, we had an option to do either the Big Hill or the, I think they call it the Westerly Expansion.
Right.
Being that the cost wasn't significant, wasn't real significant in comparison to how much more airspace we were gonna get, the city decided to move forward on both of them. L and V doesn't, they didn't identify which one would go first. We did that just strictly on the, on the proximity to the existing infrastructure.
So, when this is submitted to TCEQ, we have to show the phasing or the sequencing of the cells, right?
Yes, sir.
But that can be amended at any point?
Yes, sir. It's a minor amendment. They consider it, yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we have a location to get dirt to cover, to cover it? Is that gonna be an issue? Or are we gonna use dirt on site?
It will be an issue, but luckily, there'll, there'll be, there's a whole lot of things that we can do to account for that dirt. There's a whole lot, there's new technology out there. There's tarps you can put over it if you want to, or you can spray material on top of the trash in lieu of dirt. The hill that we're going to be working around, the whole backside of the hill is, is dirt. It's, it's rock. It doesn't work, it's done, it's not clay. We would have to use some kind of, some kind of probably rock crusher to make it where we could cover trash with it, but I think the material would still work for that.
So, we could use our own material on site, not have to.
Part of this plan will be identifying what we would use for daily cover. There's not a whole lot of dirt left on the site. We would, we continue to accept material from, from anywhere the city digs, anytime we have utility expansion, anything like that, we store it out there and we just be using some of that as well for, for daily cover. Also, wastewater plant produces cover as well for there, and we have mulch and things. So, there's, there's a couple of different options. But as, as it stands today, I think we're in a deficit for dirt by the time the landfill is, is closed, over the next hundred years.
Right. And as Councilmember Barudy pointed out, this will all be part of a discussion that the council will have when the time is right, closer to twenty-twenty-five, probably, unless we are approached by Republic, if they have an interest or some other contractor. And then we'll evaluate, is it makes more sense to operate this landfill? Because it's very, very expensive to operate a landfill. Or just continue to contract, have it hauled to San Antonio. And whoever operates it, whether it's us or Republic or someone else, we could do a contract to operate the landfill. And they'll also evaluate, you know, is it, does it make more sense to feed their landfill in San Antonio or, or to use this as a backup? And they'll be looking at volumes, not just from C to Curville, but other customers and other clients they might have in the region, so. It's, it's pretty far, far on down the road, but, you know, it's like many things, they'll be here before you know it.
Yeah, I'm looking at a study from dated January twenty-eighth, twenty-fifteen to Christine Day. And in that report that was submitted in exhibit A, it said portions of the proposed western expansion are in the one-hundred-year floodplain of Third Creek. A modeling study and floodplain delineation will need to be completed as well as coordination with FEMA to obtain a clomer or a lomer. Since the reuse pond is located within the same floodplain as the landfill expansion project, it may be the city's best interest for one consultant to perform the, the floodplain, which we did. But I don't know if Freezing Nichols extended to that area, because I know we submitted a clomer that was rejected initially on this portion. So, is any part of that western expansion in the floodplain, or will that be determined in this Phase Three or?
The, there's a portion of it in, in what is showing as the floodplain. And we are using, L and V is using Freezing Nichols model runs to, so they will dovetail in with each other on the same property. And they will update more north and west than what Freezing Nichols did on their, on their analysis around the reuse pond.
Any questions for, are you?
That's, that's what I have. You can answer questions.
I got a question. On the Westerly part, is this gonna affect the, it looks like it's gonna affect the flying fields, but will it affect the soccer fields?
There, in cell number twelve, there is a, it clips the edge of the, of one soccer field area. But, so potentially, there, it could impact the very further, further south soccer field.
We don't have to go all the way. We can work around that if we choose to.
You can pull that back. If, if they decide to do that at that time, they could pull that back. You also wanna know that, I mean, if, if that's the face of the cell, you're gonna be really close to it. I mean, it's not gonna, I, I don't know how pleasant it'll be. I don't know. We're a long ways away. We're, we're forty years or thirty, thirty years away.
Start on cell twenty, working backwards rather than going that way.
Yeah.
Get that, you see whoever's the councilor.
But even if you went with the plan, we're talking timeline that. So, put realistically, when we'd be sitting in cell twelve? If we were to decide in twenty-thirty, we're gonna start kicking into this thing.
Twenty-fourty-seven.
Twenty-fourty-seven is when we'd be hitting twelve?
Be in that area.
Okay, so just so I know what we're dealing with.
And that, that's if everything.
Right.
Went, I mean, if, I, I think Mr. McDaniel said it best, this just gives us a great negotiating piece to deal with the contractor. If they come in and say, hey, we're, we're paying out the nose in San Antonio to dump, to dump, we all, y'all are gonna have to reimburse us. We can say, well, we'll open our own, open our own landfill.
So, how far does this budget take us through this process that we have now?
What budget?
For landfill expansion, for permitting.
As far as what's already been approved?
Yeah, through the, yes, the money's, yes, yes.
It takes us all the way through the permitting process.
Okay, that's what I thought.
If this is Phase Three, of the three-phase.
Seven fifty, something like that.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
Any more questions, uh, council or comments?
Just to comment, Mayor and Council, I, I think on a very positive note, I'd, I'd just like to say that we have a, having lived all over the state, we have a really well-run and smooth operation when it comes to solid waste and recycling. And I think we're fortunate to have some good contractors, as well as David and his knowledge in the recycling area. Twenty percent, twenty-eight percent diversion rate is outstanding. And we'll continue to work on that and we'll continue to try to do more outreach to our customers of you, as you have pointed out. But I think that when you look at the kind of complaints that we get as a city, in most cities, you'd see a whole lot more in, in the area of solid waste, because they touch, you know, we touch citizens every day with solid waste. And I'm just really pleased with the way the staff is handling that, as well as our contractor. So, looking forward to the. So looking forward to the recycling initiatives that we have underway and the pilots to see how they work, particularly in the parks. It's very exciting. Um, and we will get you the, the data though on the types of complaints that we've received and, and the number over the last, uh, the fiscal year to date.
Okay, very good. I appreciate all the information. It's always helpful to know when we have constituents come and ask us these things and we'll be better informed. Anything else by council or anyone else in the audience wish to speak or have questions? If not, we will adjourn at ten fifty.